Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, Jim.
Where's Charles?
Charleston.
Come and get on with it.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this October the 19th, 2015 Commissioners Meeting. We're glad that you decided to join us tonight. And before I introduce Commissioner to do the invocation and the pledge, I would like to recognize Mr. and Mrs. Kim Ezell, who's a student taking a class, and, well, yes, we are, stand up.[85.07][85.07](Laughter). Stand up. We are glad that you are here, and we've signed your paper that you are here, so...[92.11][92.11](Laughter).
And, Assistant Attorney Officer, how did you know Stifley?
Well, I know you are, because you work for the hospital, and thank you so much. This time, I would introduce Commissioner Genetic Counsel for our invocation and to introduce our guest for the pledge.
Good evening. This is the middle of Women's Health Month, and if you know a woman, have a relationship with a woman, were born of a woman, make sure that she gets herself checked out this month. It is a very, very, very important month for women. As soon as I finish the invocation, you will meet Patrick Barber. He is the son of Lieutenant Colonel Frederick Barber and Dr. Patrice Barber, and his maternal grandmother, I call Dr. Mama, is Mrs. Davis. His parents, he has a little brother, Charlie. I saw him, yes. I talked to him last Thursday, met him last Thursday. He has big shoes to fill, because both of his parents are extremely active in our community, mentoring our children and helping where they can, along with Mrs. Davis. But Patrick is extremely good at math, but science, mind you, is his very favorite subject. Loves football, his favorite team is the Dallas Cowboys. He is training his, at least that's what he told me, is that right, sweetie? Mm-hmm. Dallas Cowboys, I tried to change this, man, I couldn't. He is an honor student in the first grade, got a report card today that was out of sight, was up here taking pictures in my seat, he will take my seat one day, but he's gonna let me finish this term, okay? But would you stand with me? And Patrick, when I finish, would you come, yes, come to the podium and, please? Heavenly Father, we are here tonight to conduct the business of the county. We are imperfect souls, trying to do that bidding and trying to do the very best that we can for the citizens of our county. There are those of us who are present, some who are not present, all of us have issues that we need your help with, whether we are elected or not. But we know that we are all a work in progress, we haven't made it there yet. Thank you for all that you do, help us to make decisions with clear minds and clean hearts. In thy name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Parents, grandmothers, who's Charles?
You dear, I'm standing here.
Best brother.
(Laughter).
Before we begin tonight, I would like to tell the people that are here and those that are viewing by television that our clerk to the board has been out having some surgery and is not here tonight, and we have our deputy clerk filling in, so we're gonna see tonight how well the clerk has trained our deputy clerk.
No pressure, no pressure.
So, no pressure on her tonight at all. So with that, Madam Deputy Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for the public comment period?
We have no speakers.
Thank you very much, and so we'll move into the agenda. Mr. Chairman? Yes?
Can I make a short recognition?
Sure.
I had the opportunity, this past weekend, to go out to Hope Mills and, I'm gonna say participate, but I don't know if that's the right word, at the Run for the Pink 5K, and we had a great representation from Cumberland County, it's part of our Employee Wellness Program, and it was just great to see them, they were all over there representing well. I don't want to embarrass anybody, but our Assistant County Manager, Melissa, was there, and Vicki, and Tracy, and a whole host of them, and they did a fantastic job.
Good, good, thank you, sir, we appreciate that. Thank you for what you do. The last manager now, any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second agenda, any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
That brings us to a recognition, and I'd like to recognize Mr. Neil Emery, who is the Outreach Associate for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. He has with him tonight someone from the local government Federal Credit Union, who is the sponsor for many awards that are given at our annual conference. This year, we were very fortunate, and one of our submissions won an honor, an Innovation Award for Development and Implementation of Extension Outreach to the military community. So, Mr. Emery, you go right ahead, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Edge, and I'd like to begin by thanking the board for the opportunity to be here this evening to do this special recognition. On behalf of Kevin Leonard, our Director and the Staff of the Association, I want to bring greetings and to thank Cumberland County for all you do for our association and the leadership this board has provided to our association over the years. We've been discussing it, Commissioner Edge and I, how many presidents have been part of this board and led our associations, we want to thank you for that. This evening, we are here to recognize some of your employees and your citizens for achievement, and then again, by first going highlighting the program itself and what the award is. This is our Local Government Federal Credit Union Excellence and Innovation Awards Presentation, formerly known, as some may have known, as the Kentner Awards, but the credit union has been willing, the local federal government credit union's been willing to take that on, and I'd like to take this time to introduce their representative here, Chrissy DeBovac, she's with us this evening, and I hope you get a chance to thank them for what they've done, I told her I hope I pronounced her name correctly. I do all right, Chrissy. But they have been willing to step in and help this program, and this is, as we noted, it's a Foster's Innovation in County Government, and it's your employees are invited to recognize, and you're in competition really of all, one other 99 counties, and so this is a competitive award. This year, we had 29 submissions for this award, and there are four categories in which we award, make presentations, one is in general government, the second in human services, intergovernmental collaboration, and in this case, your award is based in the category of public information and participation. There's four criteria, and one thing we like about this award is judged by your peers and county staff from across the state and elected officials, so we think that makes it special that you're being recognized by others who are in the same field as you are, but look at innovation, measurable results, ability to replicate, because the foundation of this award was to foster programs that could be utilized by other counties across the state in a way of benefiting county government across our state, and would you recommend, something that could be recommended to other counties to implement. I would be remiss if I didn't know we had 11 judges that across the state were willing to give their time to review these 29 applications and then to make the award. This evening, we're here to recognize Cumberland County Cooperative Extension, and as we, I'd like to invite Lisa Childers, and I'm gonna take partly responsibility why you have such a great Cooperative Extension Director, because Lisa started her career in Harnett County, and I got to be a part of when we hired her, there's our director, and I got to be a part of those that got upset when she left. But I know you've, you have really gained by her being a part, and step up here and join me, I want to...
Neil, that is called swiping her with pride.[708.54][708.54](Laughter).
Hey, she's hometown, isn't she?
Yeah, that's right.
She did great things for us, and it is special to be able to hear, to recognize this program. As you noted, Mr. Chairman, this is an extension outreach to the military community of which you have been recognized, this shows again the close relationship Cumberland County has with their military, and the willingness and the need to work with them, and to share. Cooperative Extension here has stepped up to the plate, I think, and through their efforts and through their expertise, has helped bring that to your military community and outreach there through this garden program. With that, I'm gonna ask Lisa if she'll come and just give you a little more detail, she can much do a much better job, and give you a little more background of the program itself, and recognize and introduce those folks who've been a part of this, and then I'll, at the end, we'll close by presenting her, her award, as well as her monetary award for this, this award this evening.
Thank you. I want to first thank Mr. Neil Emery for giving me my start in Harnett County. I enjoyed Harnett County, but I do love my county, so I'm so glad to be in Cumberland. I'd also like to thank the North Carolina County Commissioners Association, also Chrissy with the Local Government Federal Credit Union for making this honor possible, and thank you to this board and county management for the support that you give to Cooperative Extension. And Chairman Edge, thank you for nudging me and saying this would be a great award for Cooperative Extension to go after, so thank you for that. Cumberland County is proud to partner with Fort Bragg in supporting our soldiers and their families. Through a three-pronged approach, Cooperative Extension is reaching out to these families. One way through our 4H program, which reaches hundreds of youth each year, as a military youth, we, they often find themselves continuously relocating from one state to one country to another, but that 4H clover remains the same, and when they come to Cumberland County and Fort Bragg, they enter our youth center, and that program is there waiting for them. Another way we reach out, and that's the second approach, is through the Warrior Transition Battalion Garden. This garden provides an opportunity for soldiers to participate in therapeutic horticulture activities that can enhance their recovery, and the Extension Master Gardeners, some are here with us tonight, maintain that garden alongside these wounded warriors, and that's, you know, we would love for you guys to go out and, ladies, go out and visit that garden one day. And finally, the leaders of the U.S. Civil Affairs Units often need their soldiers trained in basic agriculture production. Civil Affairs soldiers are often called upon to go to war-torn regions, and oftentimes, they're asked to help with agriculture and food production in those countries. And although these soldiers come to us with all different backgrounds, most often, they don't have much ag, experience, agricultural experience. So Cooperative Extension provides training for these soldiers and provides them resources and knowledge about agriculture that they can then take back with them when they're deployed. We are so excited to receive this award tonight, this award will be used to continue these great programs and help us continue to reach throughout the community, our military communities. Tonight, we have several folks here to help me accept this award, because I did not do this all by myself, I have a strong team of folks that helped me. So I first want to give you a disclaimer that a lot, several of them could not be here, so, but this is just a representation of some great folks that are able to come tonight, that have really worked hard. George Quigley, Extension Advisory Chairman, I also call him the Assistant County Extension Director, where you see me, you normally see him. Liz Lottie, she's our livestock agent, and Liz helps coordinate these trainings for our civil affairs. Jessica Drake is our 4H agent. Kenny Bailey, who's our horticulture agent. Captain Sarah Luciano, she's a battalion veterinarian, has served as our liaison for several of our agricultural trainings for the Civil Affairs Troops, come on up. And Amy Stidham, she's one of our Extension Master Gardeners, and gives lots of hours to the garden. Amy Walker is here, also with her husband, Colonel Roy Walker, he is the Battalion Commander for the Warrior Transition Unit, and Amy, his wife, two Amys here, Amy serves as our liaison. And then also, Command Sergeant Major Bill Snyder is here with us today as well. So, again, we want to thank you, and I want to thank all of you for all the hard work you put into making these programs the success that they are, so thank you, and thank you for this honor.[1050.00][1050.00](Applause).
Lisa, if you could line them up in front of us here, we're gonna take a picture of all of us.
Okay.
You know, that guy on the end there kinda looks like a Scrooge or something, though.[1062.66][1062.66](Laughter).
Chrissy, get the picture.
Yeah, we need, might need to tighten up a little bit here.
to again, on behalf of the Association, thank the employees of the county for what they've done in this program.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Good to have you here.
Thank you, Cap.
Thank you, Lisa, so much for what you do.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil and Christie, we do appreciate what you do for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, not only for our county, because we were a winner this year, but what you do, what you do each and every year for all of our counties, and we do appreciate that very much, thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, is there any items to be pulled? Mr. Keefe.
Thank you, Commissioner, Chairman, item 2G, please.
That's the approval of the license agreements with Lamar, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, any other items? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve except for the items 2G.
Okay, second to that motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, and I would just, if I could have just a point of privilege, just to say that I appreciate the board, especially with the resolution and in memory of our former District Attorney, Ed Granis, I've been in this community for a long time and practiced here, and so I do think that we did an excellent job in terms of that resolution, and I just wanted to make sure, it was in the consent agreement, but I think that that was important, along with the approval of the Breast Cancer Awareness Proclamation, it is October, and I think we don't want those to get lost just because it's in the consent agenda, I think those are two special things that we do for this county, and so I would just commend the board and all of us for doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Adams, and there's, all of us have to sign the resolution for Mr. Granis, and I don't know if all of you have done it yet or not, but it'll be coming around, so. Okay, Mr. Keefe.
Yes, sir, I just have a question on the, a lot of times, there's questions about length of a lease, and this one happens to be for a long time, and I believe that there was a mutual out on this one, but I didn't see it, it's a 10-year lease, do we have a, is there an out on this?
Yes, sir, it's actually a license agreement, it's really, it's really not a lease, and for that reason, we've got a six-month notice to either party to do a walkway, we put a renegotiation of the license fee on the, every three years.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Attorney, that answered my question, Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve item 2G.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay, brings us down to item 3, the public hearings, and before we begin, I'll ask the manager to read the rules and procedure for the hearings.
Yes, sir, each speaker will have a minimum of three minutes to make remarks until, a minimum of three marks, and no time may be yielded to a speaker by another speaker. Speakers will address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by stating their name and address.
Okay, thank you, any speakers for item case P-1548?
We have no speakers.
No speakers. Tom, did you want to say anything about this one?
No, sir, there was no opposition at the planning board meeting, and they recommended unanimous approval.
Okay, Mr. Fairclough.
Mr. Chair, I move that we found a request for reasons on it consistent with the 2030 Growth Vision Plan and any other applicable land use plan, reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons stated in the recommendations of the planning staff included in the agenda packet, as reflected in the minutes of the planning board's consideration of this case, which minutes are to be fully incorporated herein by reference.
I think you need to open and close the public hearing and end of it.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Open and close, thank you, Mr. Adams, we appreciate that.
Let me repeat my motion.
No, we heard you.
Second.
All right, second to the motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
All right, second motion, would somebody like to make that, or Mr. Fairclough, will you go ahead and make that?
Yeah, I'd add too, I move that we approve the request for R-20 Residential District as recommended by the planning staff, included in the agenda packet as reflected in the minutes of the planning board's consideration of this case, which minutes are to be fully incorporated herein by reference.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Okay.
Item 3B is the minimum housing code enforcement cases, the first case number is MH1068-2015.
Okay.
You got your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
We have two cases tonight, the first case... Let's try to get this thing to work. Again, it's case MH1068-2015, property owners Jason Brandon and Kimberly Ann Fortner, property's located at 2771 Clinton Road. This is a dilapidated structure that's unsecure, and we are seeking an order of demolition
Any questions for the code enforcement officer? Okay, any speakers for this?
We have one speaker in opposition.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing, call the first speaker.
Mr. Jason Fortner. Can you raise your right hand and put your left hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, sir.
The property, I was told to clean it up, and, you know, get the cars out of the front of the yard and stuff, I did all that, but there's still some work on the outside, like siding and stuff that needs to be done on it, but like I said, when I talked to them, I thought everything was all right, but I guess it wasn't. I just, I don't want the property condemned, because the structure is really strong, it's not, I mean, it's got two-by-twelves on the floor, and, I mean, it's got a brand-new roof on it, and, you know, it just needs some siding and some windows.
Ms. Fortner, have you done anything to this property in the last couple of months?
Yes, sir.
What have you done in the last couple of months?
Basically cleaned up the yard, moved the cars out of the front, tore down the porch. I had a tree that fell through one of the houses, and it took out the front of porch, and then I had another tree come down during the last hurricane or whatever, and it actually landed on the roof of the greenhouse, but it didn't do no damage, and it landed across a couple of cars I had out there, and we've been cleaning that up, and the other house has been tore down, there's still like some debris left over, but it's pretty much all gone.
How much time do you think you need to rehabilitate this property?
Probably about two weeks.
Two weeks, okay.
Like the end of the month.
Anybody else have a question?
I have a question, what use is being made of the property at the present time?
I use it to lift weights, I got a gym in there, and it's just a house I'm fixing up, the renovator sell, or rent, probably just rent it, because I own the property, not the house next to it, but the house next to that one, and all my land connects to that land at the same time, and I bought it when I was overseas, and now I'm just getting back over here, getting to work.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead, or Mr. Evans, I'll first, I think.
Well, if we were at the part where we're gonna consider whether or not to give him more time, I would like to say something at that time.
Okay, let's see if Ms. Counsel has any question.
Yes, about your name, what is your name, please?
Jason Brandon Fortner.
Jason Brandon Fortner.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Okay, all right, anything else you want to tell us, Mr. Fortner?
That's about it.
Okay, thank you, sir, I want to ask the code enforcement officer a question, if I read this correctly, it's gonna take $84,425 to get this to a level... If I read this correctly, it's gonna take $84,425 to get this to a level that it can be lived in?